Meeting to order. If you would please rise and join me for a moment of silence, and then we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Sean Broosder.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
All right. Moving on then to item two on our agenda, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Okay, now we now move into the public forum for items that are both on or off the agenda. Is there anyone here that wants to make public comments at this time? Those of you in attendance in the audience. Is there anyone attending by Zoom, tuning in by Zoom, that would like to make public comments at this time? Seeing no one speaking up or unmuting, I'm going to assume that no one wants to speak now, so I won't read my normal little spiel that we normally do. And so then at this time, we're going to ask Todd Wood to step forward, as well as Chief Birch, and we will get you sworn in. All right. Thank you. Would raise your right hand, please.
And repeat after me. I, Todd Wood.
I, Todd Wood.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will uphold all the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
And I will uphold all the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
State of Iowa and the city of Sheldon.
State of Iowa and the city of Sheldon.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of the office of police sergeant, the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
Of the office of police sergeant for the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you. Sign that. Actually, three copies. Chief Birch to sign. Is there somebody who wants to do the honors of putting on his pen? Like Deanna? Hi, Deanna. Congratulations. Thanks, Larry. Thank you. Okay, moving on then to the items on the consent agenda, deconsent agenda, I should say. Take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Support.
Take your pick there. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Moving on then to item six, our old business, item A, resolution authorizing advancement of the cost of the urban renewal project for the 420 North Second Avenue project. We discussed that at our last meeting and continued it on. Sam, do you have any updates for us?
I do. Earlier this afternoon, April Meyer, on behalf of the Osterberg family, submitted a letter, which I converted to a PDF and linked to the agenda. You may have to hit refresh on your iPads for it to show up. I did go out and look this morning, and there is a lot of stuff that has been removed. There is still a fair amount there. I do ask for your support for the resolution. Clearly, this isn't as high of a priority for me anymore as it was prior to now. I appreciate the cleanup that's taken place, but would like the ability to enforce if we need to.
Are there any questions?
I'd make motion and we move ahead with the resolution. Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
And thanks to the Osterbergs for their progress so far. We're glad that you're making good efforts and that we can see improvements. Thank you. All right, then on to item B, a resolution to authorize a short-term committee to oversee the ISU Extension Housing Needs Assessment. Kurt, I'm assuming you are going to want to comment on that perhaps?
Yeah, so this is bringing back, if you recall, we had Abigail here, I think it was our last council meeting. She presented on the rural housing needs assessment. And what this resolution is for is the creation of the Sheldon Housing Task Force that she talked about, and this is just essentially part of the application as we submit the grant to IEDA for consideration. Part of it is the resolution showing in good faith that we're going to be creating a housing task force to kind of work on the housing assessment. So this is kind of just one of those steps, part of the grant process.
Any further comments from you, Sam?
No, sir.
Okay. So as noted, that committee, we have the structure and kind of in place from the old Housing Review Board. We may follow that as kind of a model. I guess it's up to me to appoint people in the council to approve them. So I guess I would like to just get the word out, if you are interested in serving in this capacity, it is a, there is a sunset for this committee at this point, as I understand it currently.
Yep, this is just, yeah, this is just a temporary Sheldon Housing Task Force, just specific to this assessment. So, yep.
If there is interest in housing, those of you that are covering this by media, would you please get the word out too, that people would contact the city office, contact myself, contact the councilman, whatever the case may be, and let us know of your interest, and we will see if we can't get you onto a committee here. We would need, take a motion.
I would move that we authorize the Sheldon Housing Task Force resolution.
I'll support that.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right. Then I'd like to move on to item seven B. I'm just going to read the resignation letter from Sean Broosder, dated March 15th of 2021. Dear City Manager Sam Quaker, Mayor Gales, and fellow council members, due to the circumstances in my life, I have made the decision to resign from the Sheldon City Council effective Wednesday, April 7, 2021. It has been a privilege to work with all of you, and I ask for your prayers. Sincerely, Sean Broosder, Ward Two City Council Member.
I'll make the motion to accept his letter of resignation, April, dated, effective April 7th, 2021. And I'd also like to thank him for his three and a half years of service to the community. He was a good asset to us.
All right, we have a motion, there's support for that motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right. Then I'd like to move on to item seven B. I'm just going to read the resignation letter from Sean Broosder, dated March 15th of 2021. Dear City Manager Sam Quaker, Mayor Gales, and fellow council members, due to the circumstances in my life, I have made the decision to resign from the Sheldon City Council effective Wednesday, April 7, 2021. It has been a privilege to work with all of you, and I ask for your prayers. Sincerely, Sean Broosder, Ward Two City Council Member.
I'll make the motion to accept his letter of resignation, April, dated, effective April 7th, 2021. And I'd also like to thank him for his three and a half years of service to the community. He was a good asset to us.
All right, we have a motion, there's support for that motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Okay, right along, moving on then to our new business. The first item there is the approval of the 2122 budget. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that budget as it's been presented? See a phone number popped up on Zoom.
It's ours.
Oh, that one on the bottom right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I unmuted the other people. They can talk.
Oh, okay, okay. Just looks like the couple of radio stations and Dell? Who's Dell? Don't know. Okay. All right, and no one here is looking to speak either. I don't see anybody moving, making, okay? I'd like to take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right. Then I'd like to move on to item seven B. I'm just going to read the resignation letter from Sean Broosder, dated March 15th of 2021. Dear City Manager Sam Quaker, Mayor Gales, and fellow council members, due to the circumstances in my life, I have made the decision to resign from the Sheldon City Council effective Wednesday, April 7, 2021. It has been a privilege to work with all of you, and I ask for your prayers. Sincerely, Sean Broosder, Ward Two City Council Member.
I'll make the motion to accept his letter of resignation, April, dated, effective April 7th, 2021.
And I'd also like to thank him for his three and a half years of service to the community.
He was a good asset to us.
All right, we have a motion, there's support for that motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right. We had a long, moving on then to our new business. The first item there is the approval of the 2122 budget. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that budget as it's been presented? See a phone number popped up on Zoom.
It's ours.
Oh, that one on the bottom right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I unmuted the other people. They can talk.
Oh, okay, okay. Just looks like the couple of radio stations and Dell? Who's Dell? Don't know. Okay. All right, and no one here is looking to speak either. I don't see anybody moving, making, okay? I'd like to take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right, and then moving on to the second part of that, a motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2122 budget and the certification of taxes.
So moved.
Support.
Mayor?
Yes, you bet.
If it's okay with the motion maker to, as part of that, to reallocate the Iowa's ride funding per the memo that's attached.
Oh, from SCDC. Okay.
The $5,000 for the band. That would be fine.
Who did you have as support for that?
I had Brad.
I think it was either Wayne or Pete.
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't tell who it was.
It was about a tie.
But it was not Brad, so then I'm not making a change.
Didn't hear that train coming, did you?
So, all right, if you're, see, everybody's in agreement with that, then we'll take a roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right. Then I'd like to move on to item seven B. I'm just going to read the resignation letter from Sean Broosder, dated March 15th of 2021. Dear City Manager Sam Quaker, Mayor Gales, and fellow council members, due to the circumstances in my life, I have made the decision to resign from the Sheldon City Council effective Wednesday, April 7, 2021. It has been a privilege to work with all of you, and I ask for your prayers. Sincerely, Sean Broosder, Ward Two City Council Member.
I'll make the motion to accept his letter of resignation, April, dated, effective April 7th, 2021.
And I'd also like to thank him for his three and a half years of service to the community.
He was a good asset to us.
All right, we have a motion, there's support for that motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
I too, on behalf of the city of Sheldon, would like to extend my thanks to Sean for his service. And we, our prayers are with you, as you've requested, and we pray that your future will straighten out and things will go well for you. So at this time, I'd like to open the discussion to determine if the vacancies should be filled by an appointment or by special election. I'm just going to open it up to the floor and let you guys voice your opinions, which direction you think we should go.
Well, I guess I'll start. It looks like we do have a couple of people here that are expressing interest, which is exactly two more than who were expressing interest when this position was published last time. So that does give me hope, and it does give me some excitement for the future. I guess that said, I'm also wondering if this is the time, or maybe we can take this opportunity to discuss the ward situation as it stands, and is it still the most viable way of representing everyone in Sheldon? I personally think that the ward system is outdated, and I would personally like to see us move to an all-at-large position, but I know this wasn't exactly the question that was put forth as part of this action item, but if we're going to talk, let's talk.
I guess historically, there is some history there. There was a feeling years ago that if you didn't have wards, that people would tend to be from one section of town, and some people had a problem with that, and so they decided to put the ward system in to make sure that all sections of the community were represented. I realize it puts some pressure on each individual ward to find people that are willing to run, and it's not always easy, which I don't understand, since this is such a lucrative position. And nothing but kudos when you're on it, you never get any controversy.
Wonderful when you run a business, yes.
Yes, yes, but, so there is some history there. There's pros and cons to both sides. Yes, it might be easier to find some people to run. On the other hand, having the ward system does put pressure on a given section of the community to say, okay, you have complaints, then find somebody to run and counsel. Because you get that same old thing all the time, they're picking on us. It can be, you fill in the blank, but that's kind of the history there, and so there are, I understand what you're saying, but I also can appreciate the alternative.
Sure. I guess my thought is, you know, at large, everyone's vote is weighted the same. Everyone still gets one vote. So when you have, I mean, let's take a look at our volunteers' system as a whole. Every single branch of our volunteer services is at a lack, because people just don't want to go out and do this anymore. I mean, granted, no one here is doing this for the $45 a meeting, or whatever it is that we're getting. I can probably pick up cans on the side of the road and have a better ROI, but I think we need it, it would behoove us as a town to make sure that we're providing the opportunity for our best and our brightest to help lead the discussion of where we're headed in the future. I think it's, I don't know, if it's a commentary on society, if it's just the state of affairs, but people aren't coming out of the woodwork to serve anymore. So that's, I guess that's where, what worries me now. Of course, to our people here, please, that does not mean anything against you guys. I'm sure you guys are, I know we appreciate you being here. I just wanted to use this as a platform to discuss this, because as I know, it was discussed before, and it didn't seem like it was a very favorable discussion, but I wasn't here then, so I guess this is where I get to talk.
Yeah, we discussed it when we realigned the wards several years back.
Sure.
You know, I do have some people that call and say, hey, you represent my ward, you're my councilman, and I want to talk to you. You know, so there's people that do, I believe, out there like the ward system.
Sure.
And it does keep from one side, let's say, just, for example, I'm going to use north-south. You could get everybody from the north side of town, get elected, and they could care less about the south side, and everything gets done to the north side. So that could happen with all-at-large.
Do you really think that that's, if you have, if you do not historically have the voter turnout, and if these people are basically saying that they don't care, because they're not the ones that are out looking for representation, they're not the ones out volunteering, why should we be handcuffed by that fact? I don't, I'm an at-large councilman, and so I don't have any particular person to answer to, except for every one of our 5,200 constituents. I think that that puts, that puts me in a very, very good place. I like the idea that I get to speak for everyone, and I like the idea that I'm elected because of the ideas and values that I have, and that I'm elected to make the best choices that I can make as a person for the future of our city. Now, why shouldn't that be the case times five?
In a perfect world, it wouldn't be. Show me that perfect world.
Right, amen to that.
I understand both sides of this issue, and honestly, I think the last time we talked about it was before the last election. We talked a little bit about whether or not we wanted to entertain going to all-at-large, and that was kind of rebuffed for the same reasons that you've heard already from this group. What I believe spurred the discussion the last time was the fact that we didn't have interest from a particular ward at that time, and we were subject to write-in to determine that representation. And that is, that is kind of a somewhat haphazard way of determining that representation for the person who gets wrote in, as well as for the, for the community, both. And, and so I, you know, I think that the discussion maybe has merit as an alternative, that maybe the ward system is our primary. But if we get into a situation to where there's no one interested, that maybe we look at it from a ward-to-ward basis at that time. And maybe if that's the case, then we would have two wards and maybe go to an at-large for the, for the ward that doesn't show any promise for representation. And maybe that would be the most judicious way of moving forward without, you know, going full monty both directions.
Sure. I just, I don't buy the argument that, well, they don't look out for us on this side of town. They don't look out for us on that side of town. I think that's baloney. I think that anyone who feels that any councilman sitting up here only cares about one segment of the population should come sit here for a minute and find out what it's actually like to be up here, and to try and govern and make the best decisions for the whole of your town. And, because it's not easy, and it's not fun, but it's something that I'm proud of and something that I feel empowered to do, and I want other people to experience that, because it's only with new voices and new ideas that we can grow. So I will step down off my soapbox, and we can continue our conversation.
I appreciate the opportunity to discuss that, because I think there is merit to it, as I mentioned, so. But in regards to what's ahead of us, as far as an election and/or an appointment, if we know that we have interest in the ward, and that there is more than one candidate who's interested in that, I think, you know, I think there's, there's an obligation by the city to allow that ward to select who they feel they need. And I know that it's very close to the February, or November date, when we would do this normally, but circumstances as they are, I guess I would.
Must have dropped the phone load, so we lost the, I'll try to get them back on.
Do I need to wait, or?
If you can, just a little bit.
Yeah, looks like you lost the radio stations.
Do they still have party lines? Oh.
Yeah, it's called Zoom.
How many of you know, how many of you even know what that is?
Ah, yeah, that's, sorry, grandpa, missed an out on that one.
That's true.
So we've had some weird things happening with the phones lately. That was, I don't know who that was. But like, Pat was on a call, and all of a sudden, the phone rang, so I picked it up. It was the person that was talking to Pat. The line dropped on Pat. It rang again, and I got him. It's weird, I don't know.
I think it was the ghost of council meetings past.
Enter your meeting.
Okay, Wayne, don't hang up. Let them get it.
Not taking my ball and going home.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute. You are unmuted.
Okay, my apologies to those that were listening in with our technical difficulties here. Just so you know, we did not carry on discussion while we were getting back online here. So Tom Eggers was speaking. Tom, is there anything else you want to say at this point?
Yeah, now I got to remember where I left off, but actually, I think I was leading up to the fact that it, because of our knowledge of knowing the interest in that ward, I believe that the ward should have an opportunity to choose their representation at this point, so.
The flip side of it is, will you get the same people to file and to run through an election? That's the question. Do we go down that road and then do all the postings and the filings and be at square one where you have nobody? So I mean, that's an option that could end up happening. I think appoint somebody if it runs to a petition.
That would be my question. How long, if someone is appointed, how long does that go?
Till November.
Till November.
November 9 or November 11, it's.
Till the election.
As soon as the Brian County Superhivers can, can't remember the word.
They would actually serve until January.
January, yes.
When the new elected.
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
Yeah, because that would, that would be the end of his, of Broosder's term, so.
Micah? There's a different result depending on whether you're appointed or whether you're elected in a special election. I believe if you're appointed, you only serve until the November election, but if you are elected in a special election, you go to the end of the term.
So you're saying there would be a vacancy for a couple months.
Yes, there is. In the letter from Barb Rauer, the county auditor, if the new councilperson is appointed by the council, then the person elected to the seat in the November 2021 election would take the seat on November 9th, as soon as the Board of Superhivers canvassed the election. If the seat is filled by election, then the person would stay in office until January 20, January 1st, 2022. So he would.
So does that produce a gap, then?
No.
Okay, so the newly elected person would start earlier.
Would start early.
All right.
Yes. So, and the soonest, if. So, and the soonest, if you were to have an election, the soonest that they would be elected, I think, is May eleventh, given the timeframe. So you're talking a six-month timeframe of, of serving, then?
And I suppose with an appointment, there is the possibility of a, uh, some sort of measure from the public that could, uh, interrupt this, give it some flashbacks of, uh, how I joined.
Yes. The, the public, the constituency continues to have the option to request, or demand, if you will, a special election. If you direct your city staff to do so, a notice will be published, and there's a fourteen-day window from that notice to request a special election. That's opportunity number one. But above and beyond that, if you appoint somebody, within fourteen days of the appointment, there again is a window to request a special election. So if you decide at some point, whether it's today or the next meeting, to move forward with an appointment process, you are not eliminating the ability of the public to request a special election. And quite frankly, the threshold to request it is very, very low, given the number of votes in the last Ward Two election. Just a handful of people can do it.
Do, do you know what that number is by chance? Micah?
Yeah, she said two.
Two people. Two people.
So if an election is desired, it can be triggered. And to build on the point that Councilman Barahona was making about wards are not, yes, the council can drive that initiative, but ultimately, that happens via petition as well, so even if this group says, no, we don't want to go that route, others can file a petition, and then, in the words of the statute, there shall be a special election on that issue as well. So you may or may not favor moving away from the ward system, but the greater constituency could ask for an election on that issue as well.
And what would that petition number be? Any idea?
I think it's gonna be different than your two for Ward Two. I think you're gonna look at the number of, uh, qualified voters who cast a ballot in the last city election, and there's a percentage of that, which I don't know.
Gotcha.
But it's not, again, going to be a very large number, given the people who participate in our elections.
Sure.
I guess my take on this, and I don't get a vote, but I'm gonna give you my opinion anyway, uh, is, it's a six-month period. It's going to be upwards of two thousand some dollars. To do it, it's going to take longer to get that person in this chair, uh, and so I would say we, we move forward with an appointment similar to what we did when, uh, I came on board as the mayor. And those that are interested, do we have one or two letters of interest at this?
We have, we have one letter of interest, and then another individual who I anticipate will be submitting a letter soon.
So we have two. I think with this discussion, we can put out if there are others interested, and then we do, uh, you know, a short interview, if you will, similar to what we did when the mayor thing was up for discussion. Uh, and then it's up to the council to make a decision at that point, but that's what we're elected to do, to vote, to act on behalf of the citizens of this community. And if the, and if Ward Two desires otherwise, they still can trigger an election. I mean, it's not like we've eliminated that possibility, we've just streamlined the process a little bit, hopefully, and then come November, it goes on the ballot and they get the vote then, instead of in May.
So if you would appoint someone, and there were ten people that were interested in the position, they would be eligible in November? The appointment would only go from now till November, and then there would be a regular election, correct?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions in regards to this, so...
Any other comments? Questions?
We just have to decide if we're gonna appoint or not.
Yes, that's where, I think that's where, we're at that point. We need to make a motion one way or another, to get it on the floor.
I guess I would be comfortable with making a decision by appointment and, uh, filling by appointment and having all interested applicants be here at the next council meeting for us to, for them to plead their case, and for us to make a decision. I guess that would be April seventh.
So that would be, I think we would want to have a letter of interest in that timeframe, anyone, you know, anyone interested, and then we, we make the decision then at that April seventh meeting, but I think turning in a letter of interest is the first step
Yeah, prerequisite.
Getting your name up for consideration.
If we do the appointment, how much time do we need from now until we can actually appoint somebody? Can we do it the next meeting? Or do we have to have more time for publications and that kind of stuff?
I think it's fourteen days after the publication of the notice, right, Micah? I put the previous one from two years ago on the agenda, or link that, so you could see that. Keep in mind, you don't have a vacancy until April seventh.
Right.
Right? And then, um, you can publish in advance of the vacancy, so if you so move, I can work with city staff to get the notice published when the papers allow, between now and the seventh.
Should I, should I amend my motion to push it out?
So it should be the second, maybe the second council meeting?
Right, in April.
April twenty-one seems like a better date to have the presentations and the appointment.
Yeah, give enough time for publication and all that. I would amend my, uh, motion to, uh, change that date to the twenty-first.
Yeah, in light of the conversation, uh, with council, and the information shared by legal, um, uh, I would add my support to that motion, so...
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Hint.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
And so, uh, you are so directed, then, to make, get the publish, the notice published? Okay, good discussion, thank you. Let's move on, then, to our reports. Anything from you, Sam?
No, sir.
Todd, anything you'd like to report on?
Just gonna let you know that, uh, construction season is fast approaching. Uh, we have a pre-con Monday morning on the Twenty-Twenty-One Street Improvement Project. Uh, it seems like that contractor wants to get go. I hope to be able to give you some sort of schedule after our meeting on Monday, and then I have another pre-con, uh, Thursday morning for the sanitary sewer cleaning project, so, uh, hoping to get both those off the ground soon.
Good.
Done in time for fireworks, right?
So the contract says.
So Todd, uh, what is the normal process for, uh, public announcement of when a project will start, and any of the ramifications as far as closures and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Just ballpark, is all I'm asking.
It really varies, depending upon what type of project. I, I hope to give, uh, the people, you know, a couple...
Sure, just, just to handle questions, I'm sure, just to help them get their questions answered, or get familiar with it, I would assume, so...
Yeah, and, and by contract, it's actually the contractor's responsibility, but, uh, I think city staff intends upon helping to make sure...
Sure, great, thank you.
Kurt, do you have anything else today? Okay, Scott's not here. Angie, anything from you?
Uh, no, thank you.
Micah, anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Council to my left?
No.
To my right?
No.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to thank everyone involved with the process of the budgeting this year. That's a big thing, and, uh, and it, uh, I think went very well. We had good discussion, we had opportunities to make some decisions in the direction of where our money is spent, and, and I'm not just saying that from, uh, you know, the workshops, I think, is a great format, and allows the community to participate if they so should, but, uh, for those who are directly involved with the development of the budget and the departments, uh, good job, and thank you very much, so, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Tom. Uh, just a couple things for me. First of all, I'd like to thank Kim Hingaveld, who has served on our library board for a number of years. Uh, she will be moving to Sioux Falls, so she has turned in her letter of resignation. So that opens up a position on the board, and so I'd just like to get the word out. Anybody that may be interested in serving on that board, uh, as a, with the library, supervising the activity of the library, please, again, let either the city hall, or myself, or one of your councilmen, uh, know that you have interest, and we will see if we can't find a job for you.
How many vacancies do you think we have right now, Greg, on various boards and committees?
That's the only one, I think.
Good.
So, we keep, I mean...
Seems like we've been reading a lot of resignations lately, so...
I know, but we're filling them as we go, so...
Good.
Uh, no, we're, that, that is the only one I'm aware of at this time, so, yeah.
Keep proving me wrong.
Yes, sir, I will try. And that's all, that's all I have for today, uh, so we'll take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hint.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.